I call this meeting to order. I'll rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the first thing.
All right. Can I get a... We'll do the office first.
Yeah.
So we have Jolene Wheeling will take the office since we're going to be a month early, but we're person short. We'll get you on board already.
Okay. Thank you.
Jolene, would you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, Jolene Wheeling.
I, Jolene Wheeling.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
And to discharge faithfully the duties of the office of council member of the city of Melrose, Minnesota, to the best of my judgment and ability.
And to the discharge faithfully the duties of the office of the council member of the city of Melrose, Minnesota, sorry, to the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Jolene, you want to make a motion to approve the agenda?
Yes, I approve it.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pounce. Motion carried. Open forum if anybody would like to speak. Consent agenda, approval of the minutes, approval of bills, purchase orders, approval of investments, there's backhoe license, tricat bus service agreement, couple gambling resolutions for St. Mary's, one for the Melrose Lions, a donation resolution, number 2022-76 at donation from Bunker Hill, and there's a city planner step increase, water wastewater operator step increase, Stearns County RDB project construction and engineering invoices. Can I get a motion to approve that?
So move.
A second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion is carried. My favorite part of the night. Presentation, Minnesota State High School League, Class A, 100-yard back best stroke champion, Hallie Drossel. Congratulations. We are going to have Mr. Van Beck talk a little bit. Sandy, if you want to come up and tell us about your accomplishments this past year.
All right. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Spencer Van Beck. I'm one of the assistant coaches for the girls' swimming program at Melrose High School.
And I'm also Sandy Rasmussen. I'm also an assistant swim coach for the girls.
So tonight, we're just going to talk a little bit about Hallie's accomplishments, both individually, and then how they contributed to the overall team success for the entire season. It's a pretty lengthy list because she is so incredible, and so she has one of the best seasons for an individual in the team program history. Some of her accomplishments have included setting pool records in Melrose, Vemidji, Minnewaska, Parker Rapids, Foley, and Alexandria. She has a school record in the 200 medley relay and the 200 individual medley relay. She has a Section 6A true team record in the 100-yard breaststroke. She was named all-conference in the 200 medley relay, the 200 free relay, and she set the conference record in both the 200 IM and the 100-yard breaststroke. She was named the section champion in all four of her events at the section meet, which was the 200 medley relay, the 200 free relay, the 200 individual medley, and the 100-yard breaststroke. She set a new Section 6A record in the 100-yard breaststroke. Once it came time for the state meet, Hallie earned a medal for the top eight in all four of her events, which was the two individual and the two relay, and this was first for the Melrose girls swimmer history to ever do so. She earned fourth place in the 200 medley relay. She earned fifth place in the 200 IM, eighth place in the 200 free relay, and then she defended her state championship in the 100 breaststroke, becoming the first ever state back-to-back champion in Melrose history. Our head coach, Nathan Meyer, he was unable to be here tonight due to some family things, but he said it at our welcome home pep fest in Melrose that to grow under this kind of stress at the state tournament is pretty incredible, and to get up there and right at the beginning of the finals heat and have the announcer say our defending champion is in lane four for Hallie to go out there and then win that again was pretty incredible to watch and be a part of. And so we're very thankful when we came home that we had all the support from the community with the parade back into town. And then when we talk about her individual accomplishments towards the team, her accomplishments helped the team to winning the Wilmer, Vemidji, Parker Rapids Invitationals and representing the Section 6A state true team meets, which we made it down to the city score, and then helped us win the true team section championship. It also helped us win the West Central Conference championship. But one of the best parts of our season was winning first place at the section championship. This was the first time that the girls have ever won the section tournament in all of Melrose history. So it's pretty incredible to get that far, and then once we finally made it down to the state meet, we placed eighth place as a team, and that is the highest Melrose has ever placed. So a lot of accomplishments there, and so we just want to continue to congratulate Hallie for all she has done. She's an awesome team member. A lot of girls look up to her, and we're excited to see what she has in store next year.
Congratulations. And I would just like to add, I like hearing from my daughter, who's part of the swim program, too, how respectful you are to the other people and very helpful, and you're a good person to look up to. So it's nice to have a good citizen and for everything you do for our community, we're really proud of you. And I just have a little card, which your wall is probably getting full with every, you know, thing you have on there already, but I guess it's another one that you can add to it. So if you could come up and take a picture with us, we appreciate it. Yeah, we can all go over. Let's all go over here again, and that's all right. We'll take a picture. And again, we do have a gift for you, but it's not in a good, dusty shape, so we'll get you a new one.
Come away from the light. Carol's done, so we're going to have to get from the side. Can you tip it forward, Hallie, a little bit? A little more here. There. Thank you.
Again, you don't have to sit and listen. Clear on the reports. Chief Muff.
In our monthly statistics for November 2022, we're trapped here with 26 citations, 31 verbal warnings, 21 written warnings. The written warnings were related to parking enforcement, our seasonal parking downtown area, 3:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m., no parking down there. We do enforce that or at least give warnings when there is no snow as well to remind the people that when the snow does finally show up, like it has in the last couple days, that they need to be out of the way so they can do their work. So that's where the vast majority of the written warnings came from. We had 251 calls requests for service. Last year was 202, so a little bit of bump up for that one. And last year was 3,378 calls for services here with 3201s, we're still down for the year by about 170-some calls, give or take. 32 agency assists, a little bit higher than normal. Looks up, we're visiting Socks Center quite a bit. They had some less than favorable things going on in their cities, so we went and helped out as much as we could. In that area, we have nothing more to report. The last couple days with the snow, we had no reported crashes. I won't say there weren't any crashes, but we had no reported crashes with the snowfall, so it's been good. Gary and his crew did a really nice job the last couple days trying to keep up and stay ahead of what was going on with the snowfall. I saw they were still at the shop, or at least one of them was still at the shop when I came in for the meetings. I saw they fixed something, worked their doing, but when I went into work out this morning at 5:00, they were on the road already then, so it's a long day for those guys, but they're doing a nice job, at least keeping the emergency routes open and getting everything else out of that. Any questions?
Thanks, chief. City Attorney Report, Scott.
Well, I'll start with the bad news first. Heard from Judge Hennessy today, and she denied our request to beat the manufacturer from Melrose Park. The opinion came in late this afternoon, so I did not have a chance to read the whole thing. It's a 17-page opinion. I skipped to the last page, and where it said denied, so I wanted to share that with you right away. I shared the information right away with the city administrator, so we'll go through the opinion and think about Plan B for out there. In other bad news, got my report. Couple months ago, council adopted a moratorium, and we had the expectation that we would need to adopt our ordinance to, you know, regulate sales of these cannibals. And our planner, his seller, had me to start on that, finding, looking at what other communities were doing, and we'd started that work. We put that on hold for now. After the election, the majority started talking about making more changes and doing further legalization, and so we're not even sure what the state law is going to look like, so it's kind of hard to draw up an ordinance to address that. So we'll... We have till August before the moratorium expires, so hopefully we'll know more in the next few months and see what kind of direction that should take. Last item I should mention there, I started looking at, you know, in addition to the industrial park, that's another project that's currently on hold. Did some work and identified some concerns, and at the moment, that's not being actively pursued, but we're trying to leave the door open with the property owner, you know, with the circumstances unfolding now. So I've been working for the city and don't really have a lot to show for it. Any questions from the council?
Thank you, Scott. Clean.
I have several, or a couple things later on on the agenda that I will be reporting out on, but the one thing I did want to give to you was, and this is not a discussion item, this was something that we just received today, so I wanted to make sure that you got the memo from Tracy Ryan regarding tax increment financing for Granite City. This will be on a future council meeting. It's basically, to summarize, we're going from a housing TIF, which is a typical 20, 25-year, 24-year TIF, where they want to do what's called, or I'm sorry, 26-year TIF, and they want to do what's called a workforce housing TIF. When they did their, when they looked at their projections, they were concerned that they weren't going to be able to meet Stearns County's income qualifications for some of the units, so they want to look at structuring a deal a little bit differently. So I just wanted you guys to have this ahead of time. This will be something that will be coming up in January, just for your information. And again, I have some other things further on the agenda.
Okay. All right. We're going to be on a public hearing. It is 6:15 PM. 2023 budget and levy resolution number 2022-77. Tessa.
Okay, so it's time for our annual truth and taxation hearing. The purpose of this is to let the public hear more information and be involved in the budget process. Before that, we typically meet at the city council twice a year, once in August and again in November. We review the budget, look more in detail at it, and discuss our plans for the future and how we want to present this. So in September, we adopt the preliminary budget, and that is sent to Stearns County, which allows them to notify the residents with their preliminary tax statement. With doing the budget, our goal is to get as realistic operating budget as we can. We look at all the funding sources as well as what our future spending needs are. We also complete a capital plan and look out five years and again five to 10 years to really try to save up land, best plan for those projects. And with looking at all those, our goal is to keep the tax rate as stable as possible to reduce the large swings for the taxpayers. So tonight, the purpose of the hearing is to go over our 2023 budget, the proposed tax levy, discuss any changes in that, and then if any public have any comments or questions, we could go through those as well. I'll give a history of this or a summary quick. The first area is the tax capacity. So this is the overall valuation of all of the properties in the city. We get that information from Stearns County, they give us that amount. So then we take that amount and we calculate that with our levy, and that determines what the tax rate is. So that tax rate is what's applied to each property in the city, and that determines what their taxes are. So we also take a look at what our neighboring communities, the similar communities are at. Now, just to note, I don't have any of their 2023 final levy information because they're all still presenting those, so their information was carried over from 2022. But Melrose is that dotted line, so you can see we're just on the bottom portion. So we received the market value for last year. There was an increase. The market value is estimated at $236 million for Melrose. As I mentioned, we get this net tax capacity number from the county to determine what the rate will be. For 2023, that's estimated at $3,025,000. So as you can see, there was a pretty large jump from the prior year. Now, when residents or taxpayers in town get their tax statements, there may be some increases, and there's a number of reasons. Melrose is one portion of those. It could also be increases from the county. It could be the school district, if any levies have changed. There could be special districts or special assessments. There's a number of reasons why they may see a difference in their tax statements. We will go over the levy for '23. Didn't come through quite right, but for the general fund for 2023, the levy is estimated at $1,350,000 compared to 2022, that was an increase of $125,000. The debt levy is estimated at $90,000, which is the same as last year. And so the total proposed levy for 2023 is $1,440,000. So that is an increase of $125,000. However, because of that large increase in that tax capacity, the tax rate actually decreased almost 2%. So if a homeowner, you know, all other factors aside, if there wasn't an increase on school, on county, on other items, if their market values did similar, they wouldn't feel that increase in the levy. So as I mentioned, we do have a debt levy. The city holds one governmental bond. The balance on that is $990,000, and that will be paid off in 2028. So 2027 will be the last year we collect on that. Overall, we do hold one other bond in the utility fund for PFA, but taxpayers are not liable for that. We need not levy for that. So looking at our tax levy over the years, you can see from 2014 until 2020, it was kind of minor increases. 2021, we had a larger jump, and there was a lot of unknowns due to market conditions and if the state could be withholding local government aid, so we increased it slightly. Last year, we had a larger decrease because we were looking overall at our fund balance and working to reduce that, so that was a planned decrease for that. Now we will be building it back to get to a balanced budget in 2028. So we're working on spending down some of the reserves while also planning that when we get to that ideal level there, we're able to have a balanced budget. And this shows our tax rate over the years. So in 2015, our tax rate was 71.54%. 2023, you can see it's at the lowest at 47.59%. Looking at the budget for next year, for the general fund, we are budgeting just over $3 million in revenues, which is an increase of about 4.6% from last year. And looking in those sources of funds, property tax is a big issue that, or the big area that people think of. However, that'll make up 44% of our revenue. A large portion of 33% is also made up of local government aid from the state of Minnesota. And then that piece of the pie in red is 17%. Those are franchise fees that we get from our electric department. So a portion of utility bills is transferred to the general fund. As I mentioned, about 33% comes from state aid, from local government aid. This just shows the history of it and any changes. It's been fairly consistent with some increases over the past few years. Looking at the expenditures, we are budgeting $3,133,000 for 2023. This did increase about 6.5% from last year, and it mostly relates to the areas in public safety, streets, and administration as well as planning. And looking at where those funds are going for the general fund, 27% is for public safety. Another 20% is transferred out. So this is transfers that we make to fund capital improvements, development improvements, as well as supporting some other non-major funds. And streets make up 19%, and administration and finance are 17%, and then we have some smaller sources as well. Looking at the history of expenditures over the years, there have been increases relating to increased capital spending as well as just the overall increases in personnel costs, supply costs, those different items. So you can see some of the changes in the budgeted expenditures throughout the years. Again, that can change based off of development needs, capital needs, anything like that. That was a summary of the general fund. We also have a number of other funds that are supported by the city council. We have a number of special revenue funds. Some of the more, the ones that have more activity would include our MATA fund, which accounts for development. We also have a number of grant funds and some state aid funds that we received, as well as the ambulance and fighter department. Our capital project funds, the first one, the capital improvement fund, this is our main capital project fund that accounts for almost all of the city's capital needs. You can see that expenses exceed revenues by just under 1.5 million next year. That's just kind of the spend on some of those reserves that we had been saving for throughout the years. Then we have the Fifth Avenue Bridge Improvement Project, which just has a transfer in. This is anticipated to close out that fund, close out that project finally. And we have a number of TIF funds that are from development projects. As I mentioned, we have one debt service fund. The city council does not oversee the utility funds, but just to kind of show an overall picture, the Public Utility Commission has approved the budgets for these. Overall, there hasn't been a lot of changes when we think of the revenues and expenses and capital for the water, sewer, and electric funds. However, you will see on the, are this to the right, in the green on the right, the capital has increased about $900,000 from the year before, and that's just some various electric projects that are happening. One other item that we really tried to look at when developing this is not just looking at the budget and the levy for next year, but also looking out to plan for some of those. So we look at what our estimated growth will be, what we guess for that tax capacity. We look at what we anticipate on levying for both the general levy and the bond, and where that tax rate comes out. The goal, like I said, is to keep it as close to neutral as possible, to not have big swings. So with our current planning, like I said, next year has just about a 2% decrease, and then 2024 through '27 are flat. Finally, I'll just show a quick summary of our capital. As I mentioned, we do have one main capital improvement fund, which is kind of our savings account for these projects. We transfer money annually from the general fund to save for these. And then throughout the year and throughout our budget discussions, staff look at what our needs are for projects, for equipment. We look at how soon we need to do that, if there's any other funding sources, grants, partnerships we can take part in, and look at if we need to incur debt or if we're able to cash flow those projects. So this shows a summary of the capital expenses as well as what the reserve balances are for the next five years. You can see in 2023, that green column to start with, that's our public works. It's a large amount, and this is mostly relating to some street improvement projects that we have and some housing projects that we are anticipating. And the correlating savings account or reserve is that orange. Now, in 2024, the expenses go down quite a bit, that green column, so the reserves don't really change a whole lot because we're continuing to save in there. If you look out to 2026, there's another larger project with some street improvements, so the expenses go up, and if you see that orange column, that's all pulling out of those reserves that we're saving in each year. Then in 2027, the expenses are minimal, that reserve balance goes back up. So we always take a look at what year we can do it, how that's going to, so we don't go deficit. That is a lot of information, and it's trying to be as brief as possible. Does anybody have any questions?
I got more, maybe like an observation. I had a phone call from a resident, a little concerned about their property, their estimated property tax statement because it went up, I don't know, like 40% or something. And I did share that the initial budget is always set higher, number one. But the other thing is, I said, residential property has screamed higher, commercial property has not. And I happen to have some commercial property also, so I looked at our statement, and those taxes essentially... And those taxes essentially didn't go up at all because valuation didn't go up much. So this year is, might be one of the more unique years where now the residential, more of the burden gets shifted to residential property because their values are so much higher. Commercial properties didn't increase in value, so their share of the taxes doesn't get split up evenly amongst residential versus commercial. So might be seeing that come back down again, but, because I think housing might come down a little bit again. But anyway, that's just an observation that when we talk about tax rates and stuff and capacity. Yeah, capacity went up a lot, but where did it go? Housing, so.
And properties are taxed at different class rates. So typically, a residential property is taxed at a lower class than a commercial one. So if properties all go up the same throughout the year, that commercial would have a little more of that burden. So when they stayed the same and residential went up. And I know a lot of residents have been very confused and concerned about that increase in their valuation and when the county was out overall, I believe the average was twenty-seven percent on residential.
Yeah, I think ours was twenty-two percent. The valuation went up twenty-two percent. Our taxes went up, according to the early, was sixteen percent. But the commercial really didn't change. So, you know, the massive increase in value is what shifted some of the tax burden to the residential. So even though the tax rates are different on each of them. So just an observation for us to keep in mind in the future, if, you know, we're looking at increasing the budget or whatever.
One of the comments that I would like to make about that is with the legislature this year, they are talking, they have talked every year, but this year it probably has the best opportunity to pass is they are looking at changing that property tax structure.
Oh, yeah.
That's one of their, one of the things they're talking about.
Commercial versus housing or, or residential or, I don't know.
You know, I don't know the exact thing. I do know that the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities is also really pushing to get our LGA also increased as well.
Right, so, okay. Thanks, Tessa.
Thank you, Tessa. All right, it is six thirty-two. Does anybody want to ask any questions out in the audience about this? Because we'll take action in a little bit. All right, we will take action in a little bit. We do have to hear from our city engineer. Is Mr. Blomel there yet?
Yep, he's on.
I'm here.
Good day, sir.
All right, well, I was gonna give an update tonight mostly to let the audience know what our, what our project for 2023 was going to be. And let me quick, pull that open here. So basically, I just like to, wanted to give this opportunity to anybody that's listening, anybody that's in the audience tonight, I want you to know what's happening for next year, and we'll get this more information out to those residents when that time comes. We'll get further into the design. But Mustang Lane, from about two hundred feet east of First Avenue to two hundred feet south of Highland Boulevard, Seventh Street northeast from Third Avenue to the end of the cul-de-sac, Third Avenue northeast, pavement patch, Fourth Street southeast from Second Avenue to Fifth Avenue. And that was a little bigger project with sanitary sewer, storm sewer, and just the street as well. So that's a little longer duration, a little tougher work. And then Fourth Avenue southeast, which connects into Fourth Street southeast. So like I said, just an opportunity to let people know that these are your neighborhoods. Look for us to be in your, in your way next year, but we'll make it as fast as we can and get you a better street out of it.
Okay, is there any questions?
Nicely put. Look for us to be in your way next year, I like that.
Nice. Well, thank you, sir, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right, then we have a city planner, Sheila.
Good evening, Councilman Mayor. Coming from the last, I've been working with Roger, our electrical supervisor, on the grant execution, our course of infrastructure, to, on the dedicated tie lines between the Southwest Substation and the East Substation, and getting some of those overhead lines underground in the original part of the city. We're working with DGR Engineering. These are projects identified in our system study, and they are in our capital improvement plan. There are significant funds available now from the federal government because of the infrastructure fund, but they're trickling out with different waves and getting those funds as part of the process. Our first concept paper was due tomorrow. We actually submitted it yesterday ahead of the deadline, which we were encouraged to do because the system has a tendency to crash on the deadline date, so we made sure to get that in. The Park and Rec Board is looking at some revisions to the restroom to our facility in the Stock River Park before it goes up to bits. We're still anticipating construction in the spring. The Park and Rec Board is also gonna have a fundraiser at Melrose Bowl. It's gonna be on Saturday, January seventh. We're, we're looking for people interested in forming teams or being on a team. We're also looking for business sponsors for the event and for donating and sponsoring the fire rings in the capitol. We had a planning session with the Arts Council, listened to their ideas, and discussed mural ordinance and a possible historic sign regarding Edwin Clark related to the bridge. Regarding the development projects, we are waiting for the EAW comment period to close on Riverside Flats, the project next door. That comment period closes in one week, December twenty-second. So far, only comment we have heard is from Mindot, who basically said, not in our jurisdiction. So Mindot, he did not have a comment for us. So we have one more in a week on that comment period. Regarding the multifamily housing proposed by DC Real Estate Partners on Realboat West, we're currently working on, with Dave, on the road. And I'm gonna be bringing to the Planning and Zoning Commission in January the rezoning of that area to R3 to allow for different types of residential construction. That is it, any other questions?
Are you all good?
Sheila.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So part of the public hearing, I always put under with the public hearing instead of action items. So, full read it through. So, Attachment eight, A three, proposal resolution number 2022 dash seventy-seven, resolution adopting the tax levy and the budget for 2023, according to the law. Can I get a motion to approve that?
So move.
Can you second it?
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, and then, you have these. So and then the other part of the action item is the council take action on adopting the proposed resolution prior with the closing of the hearing. So can I get a motion to approve?
So move.
Seconded.
Can I have a question after?
Sure.
Second, okay. Nothing changed on the twenty-three, twenty-seven capital improvement plan since we talked about it last time, did it? No, okay.
It did not.
Okay, sounds good, thanks.
Motion to approve?
Yes. Oh, it was for ten seconds.
Okay, okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. And that should answer this second part, what you're asking, is the council take action adopting the twenty-three to twenty-seven, five-year capital improvement plan? Can I get a motion to approve that?
So move.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, and then another action item, ordinance number twelve fifteen dash thirty-two, an ordinance summarizing reaffirming fees and city license permits of street and services, establishing a schedule of fines, and providing versus substantial review, modification, and the amendment. Can I get a, any questions on it?
I don't think so, I saw the changes on the, the stuff, so.
Yep, can I get a motion to approve?
So move.
Can I get a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. Ambulance coordinator, you want to talk about that, Lee?
Yeah. So Jen Toshida, who has been the long-term coordinator for the ambulance department, she's actually been with the department, I believe, twenty-two years, and she's been in a leadership role for sixteen years, two as the assistant coordinator and fourteen as the coordinator, has submitted her resignation, and she will be done effective January thirty-first of 2023. We interviewed then for the ambulance coordinator position. It was determined that it would be an internal posting because there were people internally that were interested. And so there were two people that were interviewed, and the interview committee was Tony Claussen, Julie Aubrey, Tom Bodie, Colleen Winter, and Doris Freeland. The interview committee is recommending that Gina Egger be hired as ambulance coordinator effective February first, 2023.
All right.
So the council give consideration, Ms. Egger.
Okay, Tony, did you have anything to add to that?
Uh, nothing, just, I thought they were both qualified, appreciate them showing interest in applying, and I think Gina will do fine.
All right. Are you making a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. The finance director hired?
So on Friday, December ninth, interviews were conducted for the finance director position. And the interview committee consisted of Jeremy Kramer, representing the Public Utilities Commission, Mayor Joe Finkin, Doris Freeland, our HR coordinator, actually probably, I don't, yes, HR, she's our HR guru, Colleen Winter, and Stacy Funk. Mr. Ryan Meyer is who the position was offered to. It was a unanimous decision to offer it to Mr. Meyer. Mr. Meyer is actually here virtually this evening, so he is on our go-to meeting. And it is recommended that he start at step two with an increase to step three in six months of a successful probationary period.
All right, is there any questions from the council? Can I get a motion to approve?
So move. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Yeah, congratulations, Ryan, glad that you're aboard.
Got the thumbs up.
Good deal. All right, and then Resolution number twenty-two dash seventy-eight, transfer of funds and committing fund balances for specific purposes. Tessa, one more time?
Yes, so this is just a resolution on free funds. We have to commit to fund balances, and as required when we modify those or change those, the council needs to take action. So the first is to move some funds in the ambulance fund from their designated fund balance and moving some to increase the balances for their vehicle set aside as well as their equipment, just to fund some future projects for that. The next is relating to our North Millrose Housing Tip. We had started this fund when we anticipated a project happening there. That's no longer the case, so we're looking to just close it out and transfer the balance into the capital improvement fund, into the housing section. And lastly is our yellow bike program. A number of years ago, we started this program. There is a remaining balance or has not been any activity, so we're looking to transfer that to the Parks Department to use for.
Is there any questions or concerns? All right, can I get a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, and then we are on to old business. Colleen has a.
Um, yes, I actually just wanted to clarify something that was said actually at the last council meeting when we were talking about, you know, when we had the city planner, when we didn't have it filled, and we had eighteen months' worth of time when that was here. And I made the comment that I did that work, I did not do that work alone. And, you know, Doris Freeland was part of that, Stephanie Perez was part of that, as well as the rest of the admin team. I think it's important to note that the admin team works very, very hard, and nothing happens with just one person. So I certainly did not want to give the impression that I just do this all. We are, we are a team, we work as a team, and I just want to clarify that and really thank them for everything that they have done.
I agree, it's been a busy couple of years around here, so, you know, everybody in the office has stepped up quite a bit and very appreciated everything that they've done. So, all right, we are on to Meadowlark Park Trail. Who would like to speak on that?
So at the last Park and Rec Board meeting, which was December seventh, thank you, Sheila, they, we discussed a request that was made, the folks that live in Meadowlark Park, there was a trail that was put in in Meadowlark Park, or finished, I should say, I believe it was two years ago. And the residents themselves have taken it upon themselves to just clear that off, and they have asked that the city would do that for your purposes. And Gary was at the park board meeting as well, I just want to show you this map. We already, the guys already clear, Gary and his crew clear four point five miles of.
He said it's a little over five miles.
Yep, almost five miles already of sidewalks, et cetera, that they keep open in the wintertime. Those are along some of the major corridors. So, you know, the park board had a good discussion about this, and certainly Justin is, can give you more insight. But their feeling is then if we start doing it in there, because we don't clear any of the trails, well, the trails in Stock River Park are snowmobile trails, aren't they?
Somewhat. Somewhat, yeah.
Somewhat, not all of them. But, but then, and Lake Wobegon is also, I think, a dedicated snowmobile trail. So the feeling was, you know, where, where would it end? I think it's something that the park board said, and when they made the motion to make the recommendation to the council, is that they're not recommending that Meadowlark Park be cleared. However, they also have said for now, meaning, you know, as things change, as we all know that things will, and as we get more trails, more sidewalks, that type of thing, we might have to revisit the strategy and see if there is a way to maybe do something different. But for now, that, that's at least the park board's recommendation to the council at this time. And I wanted to bring this up because the request came to myself. I know it's come, I know that council member Claussen and Mayor Finkin have both been asked about this. Perhaps other council members have as well. But I just kind of wanted to let you know where our, you know, our, our street crews are at right now. Even if you notice the bridge, and they did a good job, but their first priority is obviously snow removal, that type of thing. But they got out there and they cleared some of those paths that needed to be cleared, so.
I got a question on that. Is, is this the loop in the park that they're asking about for sure? Or is it the trail that goes from?
It was the loop that I was, I was asked.
It was the loop, internal loop in the park.
Gary and the guy stopped.
Dad doesn't get to it fast enough, I guess.
Gary's crew, they stopped right at the arse, they don't go, they don't even go all the way to the apartment building area because he said it would be too hard, they don't have anywhere to put the snow.
Oh, yeah, because it would be pushed into.
Because it would be in everybody's parking lots, so they would actually physically have to remove the snow. So he just said it would be a lot of extra work, and then they're not there. I mean, they're, they would actually have to drive there then, so.
Because normally Mickey does do the loop. I don't know if he requested it, he didn't, he didn't ask me about it.
No.
No, he, he will get out there and blow it, you know, he hasn't done it yet, but he probably will. And then, you know, there's that obviously connecting sidewalk between the buildings there also, that. Somebody, that might be private property, I don't know, that's just an easement through there.
Would, would it be better to table this, not that the future council sees that we voted it down, then they're wondering why we voted it down? At least maybe it'd be better to?
Well, if you table it, though, the issue is tabling, when you table something, the expectation is that it's simply tabled for additional research or that type of thing, correct me if I'm wrong, Scott. But you can't table something indefinitely, I believe it has to come back at some point.
I think it can.
I, I think, really, it had a, it should be, you have to go through the process to see if the council wants to take it off the table.
Yep.
And if you don't, then it dies. Or you do, but you start talking about it.
Yeah, because if we voted down it for some reason, we had to do it, we can't vote on it for so many months again, right?
You could visit it next December.
Yes, but just not right away, so.
If not, you wouldn't be looking at it next year, February.
Okay.
Could you make a decision for this?
Yep. Well, then, should we have a motion to not, to do it, but to look at it at, at a future time needed?
Yeah.
All right.
And there might be some other options out there, too, you know.
I think the biggest thing is where do you stop?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, you can't clear all sidewalks.
Get all them, and it's not really a major, it's not like, oh, it should be cleared because the kids can catch the bus easier or something. I mean, it's a, it's not, the only thing that's really bad.
The only thing you look at out there is there are no sidewalks.
Right.
That's the only, you know, there's no place for people to walk, other than on the road out there. So obviously, winter's probably a little more hazardous on the roads, but, I don't know.
But also, you know, parking uptown on streets that are all plowed already, instead of, you know, it's, those are tight roads there, too. So if they're parking to go and walk, might be better off to come uptown to use the main streets or. walk, might be better off to come uptown to use the main streets, or...
Yeah. I'm not, we don't have to pass it or anything. I'm sure Dad will get to it sooner or later, so.
I'd be fine with tabling it.
Yeah.
Tabling it for own, let die on its own unless we have to resurrect it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So that was new business. And I suppose Tessa actually get off without us mentioning something about her. So tonight, more or less, was your last meeting with us, isn't it? So all the years of having a, you know, a Thassensens, you know, here, it'll be sad to see you go. We just have a little certificate wishing you good luck on your next endeavor. But thank you for everything you've done, for the financial health of Melrose. It's been very much appreciated, and you're definitely going to be missed a lot. So, Mr. Meyer will be happy to have you, but, but we're really sad to see Tessa go, too. So, and thank you for all your hard years of work for the city. It's been much appreciated. So, think we could get a picture with you, too?
Okay.
All right.
No, I've never had pictures. I take pictures, I'm not into pictures. Perfect. Thank you.
All right. So all that's left is information items, schools and conferences, utility commission meeting minutes, unless there's anything else. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried, meaning adjourned.